Evening.
Yeah, leave.
All right, we'll get started, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and strength as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow as a community, and fill us with your grace. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I can do that right now. Thank you very much. We have a quorum this evening. Before we get into organization of the commission, I would like to welcome our newest member, Jennifer Maddox. Welcome aboard. Glad to have you. And also to my fellow commission members, we start a new year, and we'll have our elections this evening, but I just want to commend you folks on your commitment, dedication, and your civic duty to Spotsylvania County, and I thank you very much for your efforts. With that, I'll turn it over to the presiding officer.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with the election of the chair. First, I'll call for nominations for the chair. There can be one or more nominations made, and then I'll call for a roll-call vote for each of the nominations. Once the vote's taken, the new chair will take his seat immediately, and will take over the proceedings for election of the vice chair. So with that, do I have any nominations for chair?
Yes, I would like to nominate Greg Newhouse for the chair, please.
Are there any other nominations? With that, the nominations are closed. We'll proceed with a roll-call vote for Greg Newhouse as chair. Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Newhouse?
Do I have to?
Yes.
Aye.
Mrs. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Bullock?
Aye.
And Mrs. Maddox?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Newhouse, you are now chair.
I will take your nomination for co-chair.
Vice chair.
Vice chair, thank you.
I'd like Mary Lee Carter for vice chair.
Second.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson? Yeah, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Newhouse votes aye. Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Who's next here? Mr. Bullock and Ms. Maddox.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. The chair needs to get organized here. Yeah, really. Any other announcements?
Well, we have the meeting schedule next on the agenda.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And for the meeting schedule, the bylaws call for the meetings to be the first and the third Wednesdays of each month. This year, we have two conflicts with holidays, July 4th and the two days before, or the day before Thanksgiving. So what the bylaws say is that when there is a conflict with the holiday, the meeting shall occur on the next regular workday. So that would either, that would be July 6th, no, excuse me, July 5th, and November the 26th. So that would be after the weekend, that's a Monday. So the planning commission can either set the schedule as it's in the bylaws, or if you wish to cancel one or both of those meetings at the beginning of the year, and that way, we know going forward exactly what the schedule is. We can do that as well, and that would need a motion and vote by the planning commission.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion or any comment?
If you please, the chair, I agree with what you just said, that when these things conflict on the day, we just cancel that meeting.
Second, do any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Very well, the motion passes. Now announcements.
All right, thank you. We do have a few announcements. There is a community meeting that is scheduled to occur Thursday, February the 28th at 7:00 PM. It's at the Fredericksburg Agricultural Fairgrounds, and the proposal is a rezoning for 32 single-family attached units on 10 acres located at the end of River Meadows Way off Tidewater Trail. There is a second community meeting, and this one was not in your packets. We handed out the notice to you this evening. And that one's for Thursday, February 22nd at 7:00 PM at Salem Baptist Church in the Family Life Center. The proposal is a rezoning of 16.4 acres from Residential 1 to Plan Development 16 to develop an age-restricted residential community consisting of 22 detached homes, 18 attached villas, and 200 apartment units. And this meeting is located in the Salem Voting District, and the first one I mentioned is located in the Lee Hill Voting District. Onto the next topic, we have received quite a few applications in the last couple of months. Of note and of interest to a lot of people are three special use applications for S-Power, that's the solar energy facility that is proposed in western Spotsylvania County. I do want to note that there is an item on the agenda tonight for a comprehensive plan amendment that has to do with renewable energy facilities in general. It's not specifically for the S-Power project. The S-Power project has been deemed incomplete. The application will proceed to public hearing once we have a complete application, and we've had a chance to do our technical review. So the public hearings for the S-Power cases are not yet scheduled, and they'll probably occur sometime during the spring.
Any other announcements?
And one final announcement. I just wanted to acknowledge Greg Newhouse for serving as chair in 2017. We've added your name once again to our plaque of Planning Commission chairpersons, and the plaque will be hanging over here under the camera.
That's where you hide it. I was wondering where you. Thank you, Wanda. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes of December 6, 2017. I trust the commission members have had a chance to review. Any comment? I will take a motion.
No move or approval.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on to the public hearing part of our agenda, code amendment CA 18-001.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. This is a code amendment to the zoning ordinance. It addresses two sections of the ordinance, one related to notices and the second related to public hearings. This is a continuation of our comprehensive zoning update that you've been reviewing over the last few years, but it also implements board direction to increase opportunities for community awareness of zoning applications and opportunities for input. The Board of Supervisors held probably, I think it was, three work sessions in the fall and winter of 2017 to look at various forms of notification that the county does related to zoning hearings. And one of the outcomes of that was a revision to our community meeting policy. This is the policy that guides applicants when they are proposing a rezoning or a special use. And what it does is it details how they should hold a community meeting, who they should notify, and what the board did was increase the recommended mailing radius for the largest level of application to 3,000 feet. It had previously been 2,000 feet. So this is just an image that we use during those work sessions to show various radii for notifications. This is just an example of a case south of Route 3, and going out 3,000 feet, which is what the board ultimately adopted. You, in this case, it's going to vary, of course, for every single case, and if it's in the rural area, it's going to have fewer properties that are being notified, and if it's in a very compact urbanized area, it's going to have many more parcels. But in this example, fairly typical of a lot of the cases that we see, there is a just over 1,000 parcels that would be notified at a cost of $867. Just to compare that, previously under the community meeting policy at 2,000 feet, it would have been about half that, and that's just specific to this case.
Excuse me, Wanda.
Yes.
Is that just the mailing costs?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Is that, that's not for the community, that's for county?
Well, that, that's for the community meeting policy.
That's what I thought.
And, and now I'm going to talk about the county. So, once the Board of Supervisors adopted that community meeting policy, they also wanted to look at ways that we're notifying people about public hearings. As part of our code, there is a newspaper advertisement that runs two times. The proposal before you this evening amends the wording to be consistent with the Code of Virginia. The requirement in the Code of Virginia is that the ad is published two times between 21 days and five days prior to the hearing, with at least six days between the two ads. The second item is the mailed notice to adjacent parcels. In November, the board decided to go ahead and direct staff to increase our mailings. The Code of Virginia and what our ordinance currently says is adjacent parcels. So any parcel that touches or is across the street from the subject parcel going through the rezoning or special use process would receive a notice. So typically, that is, you know, six to 15 to 20 parcels maybe that, that are adjacent to our typical application.
Let me ask a question. So, but the Code of Virginia, we're going way above the Code of Virginia in what we're asking?
That's correct, yes. So the, the board wanted to make the notification radius consistent with that outer limit of the community meeting notice at 3,000 feet.
And what's the cost of that?
Well, there is an increased cost. Looking at one year's worth of cases, and keep in mind that the number of cases that we receive every year is going to vary a little bit, and the particulars of every case is going to vary a little bit, but just looking at one year as a sample, I came up with a calculation of $17,500 in order to do the 3,000-foot radius mailing beyond what is prescribed by the code currently.
Why are we doing the 3,000, and we're above this, what the Code of Virginia requires at this time of the 2,000? So now we're going to take it to 3,000?
The 2,000 I was referring to was the community meeting policy, and that's not required by code. The state code requires that the county notify adjacent property owners, and that's it. So the board-
Not 2,000 and not 3,000 feet, we're speaking at.
So the, the board expressed that sometimes what they get complaints about is people receive a notice for the community meeting, but then they don't receive a notice for the public hearing, and that's because the applicant sent notices to 2,000 feet away from the project, whereas the county only mails to adjacent property owners. So they wanted to make the mailing consistent essentially at 3,000 feet.
So therefore, the county would have to mail out 3,000 at a cost of $17,500, and the applicant would have to mail out 3,000? Am I correct?
To 3,000-foot radius.
And that's a cost to them, right?
Correct.
Which would be passed on to the homeowner? Okay. I understand. You can say that, but I can't. Okay, go ahead.
Excuse, excuse me.
Yes.
To clarify our point, you just stated it costs $17,500 to do the 3,000 based on just a general assumption of cases?
Right. I, I looked at one year and used that as a sample, and then we did the radius for each case and calculated it out.
That's the same situation at 2,000. What did that cost?
I didn't do that because the board didn't direct me to do that.
See, that would give us a clear picture of how much increase in the postures and cost would be. Well, the way it's stated right now, it sounds like it's another $17,000 when it's just actually an increase upon an expense that already exists.
And the, the board did put into effect the 3,000 feet by vote in November with a 7-0 vote. So what we're doing now is bringing the code to be consistent with the practice. We've actually, because of that vote in November, we've actually started to implement the 3,000-foot notice.
So we're putting the cart somewhere away from the horse now. Horse is already, we're saddling the horse, and the cart's already gone by.
And it's already-
Because the supervisors have already approved this, so we just asked to stamp this? Is that what we're doing?
Well, the, the planning commission can certainly make a recommendation however you wish, just, you know, just letting you know that-
Well, if the supervisors have already, already approved and starting to institute what you're proposing here, all we're doing is just stamping off, signing off on this, correct? I mean, more or less.
I just, can we just wish it well, because they've already did it?
Well, yeah, this is to bring the code consistent with the practice. Ultimately, if the, the board decides they don't want to do this, they, they don't have to adopt the code amendment, and they could pull back on their direction to staff to implement the 3,000 feet.
But it's really up to the board?
So, well, ultimately, yes, it is up to the board.
Yeah. That's what you said, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
The cart is before the horse.
Go ahead, Wanda.
And then there are other grammatical edits and rewording for clarity. Just to let you know some other items that were discussed by the board, the signs that are required by our code to be posted on the property that's going through the rezoning or the special use, they're required 15 days prior to the hearing. The sign on the left here was the old sign that we used. It was half the size of the new sign that we were using at this point in time. These we have put into effect as well. There's no change to the code related to this, I'm just informing the planning commission.
Excuse me.
Yes.
And the county posts these signs?
The applicants post the signs.
The applicants post these signs.
Yes, and then we get a posting affidavit from the applicant.
Thank you.
And then, just to make you aware of the additional public awareness that was discussed with the board, just getting the word out in terms of a new page we have on the planning webpage that's accessible from the main county website, there is a yellow zoning notice button here, that if you click that, it takes you to a page that focuses on public hearing cases. You can see any community meetings that are upcoming there. We have public hearing application documents all available there. There's a status report on all of the applications, letting people know where we are in the process. And then there's also a searchable map, so that if somebody is driving down the road and sees one of these yellow signs, they could go to this map and zero in on what is that application at that location. So these are all resources that are available and kept up to date several times a month. We're also getting the word out by various social media, slides on the cable channel, and just meeting announcements word of mouth, so please do promote the use of this zoning notice button on our website to your constituents, so they can be aware of what's going on.
One quick question. So I know in the past when we have rezonings, we get calls, you guys get emails, you present those emails for people in support or against the rezoning.
Yes.
What about social media? So is that going to be now incorporated in, where people can put their feelings out there, in favor, not in favor?
We don't have a, any social media pages through the planning department. We work through our public information officer and through the county's Facebook or Twitter. So that's not a way that we seek input. We're going to always direct people to provide input directly to the, the planning@spotsylvania.vadus email or, or some other method where it comes directly to us and it's not posted out to social media.
Thank you.
So with that, staff does recommend approval, and I'm available for any questions.
Yes, Ms.-
I do have one question. Going back to the, the cost that you talked about earlier, I'm just curious, how are we going to absorb that? How is that planned? Is that going to be passed on to the applicant, or is that to the counties?
No, because the state code only requires the adjacent property owners be notified, we will only charge the applicants for the adjacent. That's all that we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
What are we approving?
We're in a public hearing, so I would have to open up the public comment.
Oh, okay, I thought she said for approval.
Yeah.
She was waiting for us, I thought.
Yeah. So with that, I'll open it up for public comment. If there's any comment on this particular application, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And any other comments or questions?
Yes, what are we approving?
Something the Board of Supervisors has already approved.
That's what I'm saying. What are we approving?
Well, that is, that is one component of the code amendment. Otherwise, there are several cleanup wording changes, items that are similar to other zoning update cases that you've had before you.
We're going to move this right along. I'll take a motion on it if, I'll move to approve this. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, comprehensive plan amendment CPA 17-003. Patrick.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Patrick White, planning department. The item before you is a proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan. You have previously seen this at a prior meeting. We've refined the language, and what the comprehensive plan amendment is, the proposal before you is to add new language within two sections of the comp plan. Section 1, the introduction and vision. Section 2, the land use element. The comp plan includes, as you, as you know, the comprehensive plan is a, is a broad guidance document. It does not currently include any specific items for renewable energy, apart from some broader goals within the document. The proposed amendments will have a broader reach than just solar energy facilities. The first of those three amendments is within the introduction and vision element, chapter 1. It's an amendment to the guiding and principle and policy A, and we propose to add the language to encourage innovative land uses such as renewable energy generation, data processing, and other industries leveraging technology in fields including but not limited to information, technology, medicine, and logistics. This would be a countywide economic development kind of supportive policy we're proposing to add in this element. The second addition proposed for the introduction and vision chapter would be a new policy under, excuse me, a new sub-policy under guiding principle and policy D. We're proposing to add in the underlined language to encourage complementary land uses such as agritourism, agribusiness, and renewable energy generation in agricultural areas, excuse me, agricultural and rural areas. And lastly, we're proposing to add in new language within the land use chapter, which would, that language would be that renewable energy generation facilities such as solar, geothermal, or wind should be cited and designed to minimize detrimental impacts to neighboring properties, uses, and roadways. This policy is written in an attempt to be protective of surrounding properties and roadways and provides staff a, something that they can point to in their comprehensive plan analysis of a special use case and comment on whether or not the proposed project meets or does not meet or partially meets that, that goal. We did receive some feedback in the form of an email which you have before you from someone who will be impacted by a future special use case, who felt that the term detrimental impact was vague and proposed that we elaborate on that. Using that email as a guide, staff drafted some additional language which could be added to item 9, should the planning commission be inclined to do so. That's not to say that if you decide to keep the language just the way staff has proposed it in the, in the item before you, we wouldn't look at those things anyway. But the person who emailed us wanted, thought it was a good idea to expand upon it, and this is a first attempt at drafting that language, and I believe it captured what he was proposing pretty concisely. The staff's recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment. I will stand by for any of your questions.
Back up one slide if you would, Patrick.
Backing up one slide.
Could you walk me through that revised statement?
Sure. The, imagine that the portion at the bottom just follows roadways. So just, that would be one long, two-sentence combination where the first part of it is the statement about the renewable energy generation should be cited and designed to minimize detrimental impacts, and then it continues on to say detrimental impacts may include but aren't limited to detracting visual impact, noise and environmental pollution, roadway and infrastructure damage, degradation to the community, and negative ecologic and hydrologic impacts.
By what standard do you measure that? For instance, detracting visual impacts?
Well, as you know, the comprehensive plan is subjective, so-
So what may be a detracting visual impact for one project may not necessarily be for another project. So it's quite subjective.
Agreed.
Noise and environmental pollution, what's the standard by which you measure that?
Just as subjective as the first.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is that this incorporates a very subjective analysis, whereas one application applicant may be treated differently than another applicant?
Well, I'd hope not. We certainly try to treat all of our cases fairly.
So my concern is by what standard we use to measure this, so that, so that these, these applications are treated fairly and consistently across the, across the board? Not that I'm expecting you to answer that tonight.
On the fly?
On the fly, but when I read stuff like this, it's, it's very subjective, and I don't understand by what measure you use to make these assessments.
Well, for example, looking at this language, the visual impacts, that's a very subjective thing, and it's going to depend on where one might be looking from. What we've proposed in the current language of the solar energy special use code is to accomplish that through something called a viewshed analysis.
So is a solar panel a visual impact, but a windmill is not?
No, I would imagine both of them are kind of on similar terms, perhaps the windmill more distracting. The noise and environmental pollution-
Now, when you get to noise and environmental pollution, I have a better concept of that because I think the state has very, for instance, VDOT goes through analysis like this that one can point to as a, as a means to measure or determine what noise and environmental pollution is, and it's, and it's fairly consistent.
Roadway and infrastructure damage, one of the things that we've considered doing with this one would be videotaping perhaps the, the roadways along major construction paths to a site and comparing them to what the, what the videotape would show after the construction is done. Again, it's a, it would be a subjective thing. We'd be looking at one frame of the video and looking at another frame of the other, and someone would have to manually decide, and then in the, in the staff report you'd get for the special use, in the comprehensive analysis section, your staff would be looking at those things and kind of opining on whether or not it was believed by staff that those items were satisfactorily met or partially met or not met at all.
So any other questions or comments at this point? So Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Walk me through how we got here today. We, this is not the first time, this is, this has been before us.
Right. Around the same time as the, I guess it was towards the latter end, when the special use, when the code amendment was done to allow solar energy facilities by special use permit, we found that because they were utilities, that they were subject to a 2232 review or a comprehensive plan conformity review. You'll note that there's one of those on your agenda tonight. In order to have a better review of a potential project with the comprehensive plan, we, we believed that some additional language was necessary in the comprehensive plan that we could react to. And at the first attempt of drafting that language, we included modifications to four different elements, and there was, and we brought that to the planning commission, and there were concerns about amending two of the elements, the natural resources and the environmental. So we pulled those and brought back a shortened list of- So we pulled those and brought back a shortened list of the three amendments.
So the first time you came was, you, you made the presentation, it was the form of a public hearing, correct?
No, at that time it was a request for advertisement.
Okay, request for advertisement.
And the Board did approve that, but then also we could tell there were reservations about those other two amendments in the natural resources and environmental section. So we brought it back and asked for another request to go to public hearing with a shortened amendment proposed. Then we took that language and with the help of our county attorney's office, made a few minor tweaks to those items. And here we are at the public hearing for it.
So the, if I recall correctly, you came before us with a public hearing. We had, we held the public hearing. We kept the public hearing open for you to go back and review additional zonings, if I remember correctly.
That?
Is this the same?
That was related, a related item. That was actually before this specific item. That was, that was for the actual amendment to allow the, the solar energy facilities by special use.
Okay, very good.
This is the first public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment?
For the Comprehensive Plan, okay, very good. I got it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
I wanted to have that straightened my head. Yes, go ahead.
All right. Suppose that one is approved, okay?
Okay.
And it doesn't make it, you know, they want to give it up, they want to do without it, you know, going out. Who's responsible for the cleanup?
Well, that does, to answer your question, the codes that we wrote and that were previously approved for special uses for solar energy facilities require the posting of a decommissioning bond. That bond would be held by the county of Spotsylvania should they walk away from it and the county need to take over, remove the solar panels, and remediate.
How did you decide on what a, how much a bond would be?
That's, that is, it would be a, a series of all the different elements of decommissioning a site. It would involve the costs of removing solar panels, how to dispose of them.
Do we have any idea of any of that yet?
Not yet, ma'am. The S-Power's application materials, that is something we're expecting from them, their first draft, if you will, of what they're proposing that bond would be. And then staff would analyze it and react to it and likely find.
Who's proposing?
The S-Power, for example, that case, the solar energy S-Power case.
Ms. Carter, for any bond, what we get is an engineer's estimate. So an engineer will go through, and they're always provided to us by the applicant, their engineer will provide to us a estimate of the cost. And then it's stamped and sealed by engineer. And then we will review that and react to it, and then it'll be adjusted as necessary.
Okay, so I understand that, that would go to the applicant and not the property owner. It would be up to the applicant to remove, to put the bond up, am I right, the property owner?
The applicant, yes, the developer.
Okay.
There could be one and the same. Yep.
If I may.
Yes, Ms. Thompson.
They're going to be posting this bond before they ever construct, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Because I had the feeling we were talking about their plan for a bond when they get rid of decommission.
Mm-mm.
That'd be too late. Misunderstanding. Good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, very well, we'll move on to the open for public comment, assuming we'll have, okay, let me walk through the procedures here. As you come up to the podium, please state your name and address. You will be given three minutes. There's a light on the podium that will be green. When there's one minute left, it'll turn to yellow. You'll have one minute left. When it turns to red, I would appreciate you wrapping up your comments. If you represent more than five people, we'll grant you five minutes to speak. And again, when it turns to yellow, you'll have one minute left. And again, when it's red, I would ask that you wrap up your comments, please.
First signed up is Alfred King, followed by Richard Janelle.
All right. Starting, I have a question. There was a neighborhood meeting at Fawn Lake about the solar farm. Would that count as the public hearing that is called for in this amendment? Or is that just information that's interesting?
The community meeting is not part of the formal process. The process starts when we get an application. So the, the community meetings that happened for S-Power so far, they were just informational. The public hearings are before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, they will occur in this room, and they will be sometime in the spring or beyond.
I am representing more than five people. My name is Alfred, Alfred King, 11102 Fawn Lake Parkway, Spotsylvania, Virginia, in the Livingston District. I'm representing the concerned citizens of Fawn Lake and Spotsylvania County. There may or may not be a conflict of interest between the concerned citizens who are homeowners and the developer of Fawn Lake NTS, Virginia. We have not heard from them as to whether they have made any arrangements with S-Power, and therefore we are presenting this simply as our views on something that could be very significant to those of us who have homes in Fawn Lake. It's sort of interesting that the combined market value of the homes in Fawn Lake is actually significantly in excess of what S-Power is proposing to invest, and therefore I think that the homeowners with a much larger investment than S-Power deserve a close and good hearing. We feel that the land use amendment that you're considering should be adopted. The kinds of questions that you're asking are reasonable, and we simply want to point out tonight some of the other concerns that some of us have had. Keep in mind that at least we have been informed that this is the 10th largest solar farm in the world. Why they would cite this in Spotsylvania County when you have days like we have here with no sunshine is beyond my comprehension as an investor, but obviously they think that this is a good place to invest several hundred million dollars. Most wind farms are, solar farms are in the desert where there's much more sunlight, and we are really concerned that a investment of this size so near to our properties cannot increase our values. I have heard no indication from anybody that our property values will increase as a result of this solar farm. There may well be some significant economic detriments, some of which I'm going to discuss right now. We have to request sufficient barriers for visual and sound should the application be approved. That's part of what you just said. Ideally, the solar farm should not be seen or heard from any residential areas. You should make sure that the applicant avoids any contamination of groundwater and runoff due to the use of chemical cleaning agents, herbicides, pesticides, fertilizers, and other chemicals. The use of these chemicals should be controlled and monitored by the county. These chemicals should be applied so that they are not blown by the wind in case they're applied by airplanes or helicopters. Into nearby streams and lakes, runoff should be captured and contained. Contamination of our water could have dire consequences, including tainting the freshwater supply and rendering the neighbor lakes and streams unfit for swimming, fishing, and other recreation. We would request that the county and the applicant perform hydrogeological studies to determine if the project's amount of water usage from the local aquifer could actually lower aquifer levels, thereby negatively impacting wells, springs, ponds, and streams. Peak loads during construction and operations should be, peak loads of water usage should be evaluated during construction and operation, should be evaluated over a range of conditions, including drought. There's a concern about solar panels, which contain some significant chemicals, which can be highly dangerous. And what happens if some of those chemicals get washed off as a result of cleaning of the panels by the applicant? The other question that was just discussed, which is the decertification or diminution, abandonment of the property is something that we are concerned about, and we will be looking very closely at the proposed bond so that it's sufficient to cover any kind of remediation. We will be actively participating in all aspects of this application, and we want the Planning Commission to consider that the homeowners have a bigger investment than is proposed by the applicant.
How do you say your last name?
Good evening. I'm Richard Janelle. The address is 12,000 Fawn Lake Parkway, Spotsylvania, Virginia, Fawn Lake. My comments will be addressed to the issues that you had concerning interpretation and of these additional items that Patrick proposed adding to nine, item nine there. I was one of the persons that contributed to that, and there's others in the room here that participated as well. I spent 43 years in federal government, primarily in regulatory functions, and as you all well know, the devil is in the details. The item nine, as written, talks about detrimental impacts to resulting from these, these facilities. We thought that that needed to be expanded somewhat to, and the purpose was not to create a situation where you're, you're trying to do subjective interpretations, but as a cue to where you should focus a due diligence analysis of these different programs so that the Board, or whatever the deciding body is, can make a informed decision. I have seen too many cases, also right here in Virginia, but also in, in federal government, where people come in, make proposals for programs and projects. They don't send the technical rep, they send the guy who's supposed to sell this to the, whoever the decider is, and they do a, a really slick job of trying to sell it, but when it comes to answering technical questions, they're not so good at that. That's what happened at our Fawn Lake meeting that was mentioned. And I saw this a couple of years ago in Virginia, and the issue was spreading of Class B biosolids on farmland, okay? And there was a public hearing, and there was, it was obvious that whoever approved that had not considered some of the implications, like what happens when you spread it on land where there's people close by living that have shallow wells, or that there's more involved than just bacteria. It's what's in the biosolids other than bacteria, things like chemotherapy drugs, heavy metals like mercury and so forth, that were not considered. So again, the intent of this addition was to provide some specificity that would cue a due diligence analysis to make sure that we, we knew what we were deciding upon and were well aware of what the implications were. Thank you.
Judith Janelle, followed by Michael O'Beere.
Okay, so I'm building on what was previously stated by those two gentlemen. One of the issues when you look at things, and it mentioned aquifers and waterways and so forth, in solar power panels with a huge solar farm, not just on rooftops, they, they have to be cleaned frequently because they can't, they degrade anywhere from 10% to 40% by the amount of dust, pollen, et cetera, on them. So to clean, now, we're talking 1.8 million solar cells, will take anywhere from 8 million gallons up to 40 to 50 million gallons, some estimates for 300 million gallons. And it all depends on the amount, like when pollen, if there's a trickle rain and pollen's on your windscreen or your car, you have to kind of scrub at it to get it off, uses a lot more water. So now for next, next light south, which is one of the large solar farms in the western part of the country, they're trucking in set, anywhere from 550 to 700 million gallons of water to not deplete an aquifer. That's a lot of trucks on Brock Road. So wherever, you know, questions to be asked. And also for the bond, that needs to also be included, you know, for damage to infrastructure, roads and so forth. And you have to also look at not just what is the cost right now for reclamation of that land, but also the average life of the solar farm is about 30 years or less. And S-Power mentioned anywhere from 15 to 30 years. So you've got to look down the road at what it would cost. And the, the panels are made of cadmium, which is a very toxic chemical. So also if you have a fire, you are now talking lightning strike, and then you have, if any of the bonds, the solderings are damaged, you have direct current coming out, and it's very lethal to firefighters. So look at also what kind of extra equipment for a hazmat fire on one, you know, 6,000 acres of land. How, and also, how well can they monitor it to know if there's been a lightning strike? They're talking 15 people to monitor that, and that, that's not 15 people around the clock, that's the total number of people that they plan to use at that site. So again, if you're talking about 8 million gallons to clean it, where's 8 million gallons of water going to go? Going to go into the creeks, there are two creeks through that property, and also the Chesapeake watershed? What chemicals will be washing? Because there's no way they can use drainage ditches for that much water.
Thank, thank you very much.
Oh, sorry.
Michael O'Beere, followed by Richard Berry.
My name is Michael O'Beere at 11201 Chancellor Meadows Lane. I got 1,500 foot, running foot of direct impact on the solar field. My house is only 60 foot off the property line with direct impact of the solar field. I've submitted, drawn an application or paperwork to Mr. White on what Canada, Canada's doing on their buffer systems because they realize that 50 foot does not work, and they've been doing it a lot longer than we have. And I asked the Board to start a community, solar committee, working alongside y'all and the planning, planners to, that the community have a little bit of input into what's going on with our community.
I'm Richard Berry, 11505 Culpeper Court, it's Fawn Lake. And in full disclosure, Vice President for Development of the Fawn Lake Community, representing the declarant, NTS Virginia Development Company, and President of the Homeowners Association Board. I'm going to keep my cop, my comments in reference to the Comprehensive Plan and the ordinance with the Board of Supervisors passing in November. There is a level of concern, as you can all imagine, and I commend the Planning Department staff, Wanda and Patrick and I have met. staff, Wanda and Patrick and I have met. We have sightlines, noise abatement, we're concerned about any Chesapeake Bay Protection Act as a developer. We are constantly handling erosion and settlement control issues with DEQ, with your own ENS department, and we take that very seriously. I think this is a case where maybe necessarily one size doesn't meet all. You see in the newspapers today, 300 acre solar farm here, 400 acre there. This one's pretty big, and I think it's overwhelming to a lot of people in the region, as well as to the Fawn Lake community. We have a beautiful lake, we want to protect the integrity of that, and we're going to entrust that the Planning Department, in concert with the Commission and the Chairman and the Board of Supervisors, will look after the existing property values, as my dear friend, Mr. Alfred King, mentioned. We've got a lot of money invested in the community and there's a lot of property owners with a lot of personal monies invested in Spotsylvania County. Our property tax base, our real estate tax base, our sales tax that we generate, there are others, some largers maybe, some smaller, but we all pay. And we just want to make sure that the right thing is being done and that the package as a whole, in the comprehensive plan and with the ordinance, provides all of the residents, Fawn Lake, Catharpen Road, everybody, with having the ability to be a good neighbor instead of an adversarial neighbor. That's all I'll ask, and thank you for your time and thank you for your efforts.
Anybody else wish to speak at this time? Mr. Payne?
Mr. Chairman, other members of the Spotsylvania County Planning Commission, my name is Charlie Payne, Law from Herfa Fleischer. We do represent S. Power and appreciate your time this evening. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, congratulations on your reelection for this year.
Thank you.
It's a layer of love, I'm sure, like it is for all the members on this board, and appreciate your service. And I'm here actually to vote, not to vote, but to voice our opinion in support of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which is, many of you know, all of you know, is simply sort of cleanup, catch-up, if you will, of the county's policy on renewable energies and solar power being one of them, and also with the most recent zoning ordinance, which was passed by the county and the Board of Supervisors just last year in regards to solar power. Many of the residents that are here this evening did attend the community meeting at Fawn Lake. That was, I thought, an informative meeting. There was also a larger community meeting the next day in the Livingston District, which many questions were asked and hopefully answered, but this process is still evolving. As staff has noted, the application is currently incomplete. I think a better way to put it is probably about 85% or 90% complete. We've got a few things to shore up and to address. Many of those, and I'm not sure if the residents have had an opportunity to review the ordinance that was passed last year, those elements, as development standards for solar panel uses are captured, noise, water impacts, impacts on the environment, setbacks, et cetera, decommission, transportation effects, all those elements are captured in your most recent ordinance. In addition, that's in addition to the layer that's already there for special use permits, which takes into account much broader evaluations, including impacts to surrounding property owners and health and public welfare and safety of the community. So, all of those components are already in your zoning ordinance today, so I know Patrick has introduced some new language, which quite honestly, I don't think is necessary because of the fact that, one, your comprehensive plan's a guide, it's not an ordinance, it's something that you simply follow as a sort of a guidepost, if you will. And your zoning ordinance is to capture, is to be the teeth, if you will, of that analysis, and I think you already have that in place with the most recent approval. And again, just sort of consistent with the county's policy on renewables, especially solar, it's an emerging clean energy source that is not only happening here, it's happening across the country, across our world. It is also very attractive to users, especially those technology users, which are the new number one job creators in this country, will hopefully will attract those users to not only Virginia, but to Spotsylvania County. Having a project like this in Spotsylvania County is an enormously important thing and leverage for the county to attract technology companies. There's job training opportunities, as well as tax revenue opportunities, and no impacts to county core services. So, some of this, this is just some of the key highlights to what solar energy can bring to a community and to a Commonwealth, and again, we appreciate your time and support for this amendment to the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, at this point, I'm sorry.
Jan Stanley, 13411 West Catharpen Road. I just moved out here just very recently because of the forest that was behind the property we were buying. The birds, the squirrels, the bats, the insects, all gone now. The whole purpose of my moving out here, so I could retire, and peace and quiet is gone. Now, several people have talked about the water usage. I do not know at this point in time whether the solar panels, 1 million of them at least, will be made on-site or if they're going to be trucked in. If they're made on-site, they take about 5,000 gallons of water per panel. That's not good for the area, that's not good for the soil, and I have high doubts about whether or not the water would be thoroughly clean to drinking water standards, which I don't think they will be. And to top it all off, this S. Power company that this gentleman talks about was bought by a Canadian company, so why are we doing all of this for a Canadian-owned company? That's my question.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll close the public hearing at this point. Patrick, I don't know if you had any follow-up at this point very well. Any questions or comments from the Commission?
Yes, I've heard what these folks said, and they've got valid points, and I agree with their submission of the further language to Article Nine. But I too would like to see further definition of, more precise language, in fact, of the issues these folks have brought up, whether the water, all the gallons of water they're going to need to clean. This is the first I've heard about any of that. I would like to have more input from that, if it's possible. I know you've been writing notes, Dan, I hope you can get with these folks perhaps and see what further issues they have. Thank you.
To touch on that, sir, we do take notes of the questions that our citizens pose to us, pass those on to the applicant, and then formulate in a list of, we're calling frequently asked, questions to answer some of the questions that we get in venues such as this.
All right, I have something.
Yes, Ms. Carter.
I certainly agree with Mr. Thompson. The concerns that has been brought before us tonight, I would like for planning staff to answer those concerns, and of course, I believe we have someone who's representing SP Solar System, and the input from them also, versus what they have, you know, concerns about, which are certainly valid, but how are they dealt with through the solar system? So I, before I could make a decision on what to do about this tonight, I'd have to have answers, and I'd have to definitely have answers from you all working with these people and what we can come up with. I just could not support it tonight.
Any other questions, comments? I too agree, there are issues here that we need to consider. One of the best comments I heard tonight was a solar committee, and I'm not sure how the structure of that would work, but I found that an interesting comment that I think would have great value, not so much in this particular case that's before us, but moving forward on individual cases to incorporate public comment in that format, to me seems like a good idea that we ought to look into. So, I guess, I guess I will take, if there's no other questions or comments on this, I will take a motion on the amendment to the comprehensive plan. One other question before I take that. Patrick, the language that you're talking about in that slide that we went over, is that to be part of the, is that incorporated into the, what is it, the zoning amendment? I'm not sure what we're...
Yeah, if you're interested in having the bottom portion of the slide integrated with Policy Nine at the top of the slide, we can certainly accommodate that. And this item would need to be passed by resolution, if I'm not mistaken. So if I might suggest some language, the Planning Commission, a member might wish to make a motion to pass a resolution supporting the comprehensive plan amendments with the new detrimental impact language to the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, I don't think we're prepared tonight to do that.
Very well.
I'm leaning more towards, you know, I think the language that we have in it now covers those types of issues, especially when you incorporate all the environmental laws that we have with EPA and DEQ and all those things that come into play on an application like this. But I think it's worthy of additional discussion, so Mr. Smith, have you got a...
Yeah, I was going to make a motion whenever...
I guess we're ready for a motion, if you'd like to make one.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we postpone this until either give planning staff 30 days to come back and try to answer some of these questions that were brought tonight, and to make sure that we have their concerns and issues covered in this comprehensive plan.
Do we have a...
I'll second that. I would like to explain my second.
Yes.
Whereas, this is such a big thing, we need to proceed really carefully. It's not a housing project that somebody could lose and somebody come in and finish. This thing entails a lot of beautiful land, a lot of people's lives, and I want this to be done right. All the issues that these folks have, I want them all answered. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick.
Yes, Mr. Dean.
One thing I'm noticing is that we're combining two different cases. We're combining the comp plan amendment to allow, to define how the special use permits may apply to the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan, comp plan. And we're also trying to approve that based off of a large case that we know is coming up. And I just want to make sure that we distinguish the two. A lot of these details that I'm hearing tonight, I feel would come out in the special use permit by the applicant. In this case, it's S. Three, or S. Power, excuse me, S. Power. I just don't want to make sure we confuse those, because yes, the, I hear 5 million to 300 million gallons of water. Those are all questions that a very technical person should be out here being able to answer for us on a case-by-case basis when it comes to these solar farms moving forward. So I just want to make sure we keep that in mind moving forward.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I, I agree, and that we definitely want to answer the questions, as I stated, that we have, but also I want to hear from the applicant on these questions also, their opinion of it. What is it, you know, that they're saying that it can be handled this way, or can, something that can be done? I mean, we have really got away this one with this one. And I understand people, residents who are concerned about their properties and what it would be, but I want to know what the solar power industry has to say on that.
And that would be on a case-by-case basis in the appropriate application?
Correct, at the time of the public hearing for that application.
At the time of the public hearing for that application. What's before us tonight is the comprehensive plan amendment. And through that, without being project-specific, there are some very valid comments brought up tonight that we're asking staff to consider when you come back, but in the context of the comprehensive plan amendment. Yes, so we have a motion on the table, it's been seconded. Any additional comment at this point? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Very well, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to the next item, CPA 18-001, the CIP, Comprehensive Plan Conformity Review. You'll look you one again, Patrick?
Yes, sir. The county's Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, addresses short-term facility planning over a five-year period. It's updated annually. I believe this is the third CIP update I've worked with you guys on. As you recall, Code 2215.22232, the Code of Virginia, requires that a local planning commission review new additions to the Capital Improvement Plan to determine whether or not they are substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan. There are five projects in your CIP, or excuse me, five potential new additions to the CIP in your packet. They're summarized in this presentation with more details within your agenda packet. Planning staff found all five of the projects in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The first of those projects is the design and construction of a new county office building to house the Department of Social Services and the Health Department. This project would be a new county office building in the county courthouse/judicial center area, this area. The existing departments were evaluated in a space need study in 2013 and were identified as lacking physical room for departmental growth. The comprehensive plan has a public facilities element within it, and while it does not dictate that there must be one Health Department employee per so many residents, or one Social Services worker per so many residents, it does provide some principal needs. Those principal needs would be to provide community facilities and services to exist, to serve existing and new development in efficient and cost-effective manner, to provide emergency services and law enforcement to protect citizens' businesses and allow them to enjoy a safe and secure environment, and to provide a system of high-quality educational opportunities that meet education needs of citizens. Also, within the comprehensive plan's public facility element, there is language supporting the grouping of complementary services, such as the Health Department and Social Services. We believe that's a good example of a good co-location. The second addition is for, there's actually four different transportation projects. Yes, sir?
Patrick, how do we handle this in the past, case by case, or, I think we did these...
If the Planning Commission finds that all of them are consistent with the comprehensive plan, you can just do one motion and vote, but if you're going to find that something is not consistent, then it should be divided out.
All right. So I would like to do these separately, if that's acceptable to my fellow commissioners. Okay. And is this the appropriate time to ask questions about the space need study in the DHS? Or do you want to go through your presentation?
No, since we're on the, we're on the subject, so...
Okay, very well. So the space need study was done in 2013, is that correct?
That's correct.
Has it been updated since then?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. The space need study was a space need study just for additional space required for this particular department?
No, it was a series, it was, it was multiple departments.
Multiple departments. Did the space need study include existing spaces available? Existing county-owned spaces, existing commercial spaces that are vacant now?
I cannot attest to that. I don't know.
Do we know what the vacancy rate is for county-owned properties at this point, or the commercial? I know there's a ton of commercial space out there right now.
I'm afraid I don't have that figure either.
All right. One other question for you, maybe a couple of other questions. It says that the, that if I've got this correct, the Department of Humans, the Health Department and the DHS, I'm looking for the specific, must be co-located.
It's not must, but it's recommended that they are. There's a statement in the comprehensive plan that supports co-locating those types of similar or uses that affect similar populations.
Let me, if you'd bear with me just for one second, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
Uh...
Yes, sir.
On page, I just want to beg to differ with you for a second. Hopefully, I've got this right. I don't, section 3.3107, I assume that's, I wish I had a page number for you. It says, "The Rappahannock Area Health District, the Rappahannock Area Health District provides preventative, protective, environmental health issues." I get all of that for Caroline, King George, Spotsylvania County. Current location is the Spotsylvania County Health Department, which is fine. Then the next line down says, "The Health Department and the Environmental Health Department must be co-located."
That's within a document that's not the comprehensive plan.
So is the space needs study based on the assumption that they must be co-located? Is the way I read this? Can you...
I could, maybe, I'll have to get an answer for that for you.
Is it, do we have somebody here that can answer that? If you don't mind?
My name is Bonnie Jewell, and I'm the Budget Manager. At the time, in 2013, I was the staff liaison, I guess, to the consultant who was doing the space needs study. It was a space needs study that touched multiple departments, and I almost want to say every department who is currently residing in the courthouse area. To address your question about commercial space, we did not look at commercial space. The direction at the time was to look at existing space owned by the county in the courthouse area. We had just recently moved the DSS folks, the code compliance folks, from the Massaponix area back to the courthouse area, and that was intentional to get all the county offices back here at the courthouse. At the time of the space needs study, we did talk with the Department of Health staff and also with the DSS, the Department of Social Services staff, and because they do serve many of the same clients, and because they do have limited access, in often cases, limited access to transportation, it was thought to be best at that time to locate those adjacent to each other, and that is still the case.
And if I understand correctly, the environmental science, or environmental health has a different function responsible for different items like subsurface waste disposal, environmental type concerns versus the Department of Health, which does more of the interpersonal type of healthcare issues? Is that...
I'm hearing from the Director of Social Services that the Department of Health does both.
I guess my question is, you know, more, I would appreciate an analysis on what we have available before we go ahead and approve a building, a new county building, to what, you know, utilizing the spaces we have. I'm not here to debate the services provided. Those are perfectly fine and needed, but it's the utilization of space. And, you know, when I hear we want to build another building, you know, I just want to ask some questions. Are we utilizing the space we have? Is there other alternatives available before we go build another building? Is my concern here.
And as part of that, more recently, I think county admin, in consultation, I guess, with that study, has looked at that. And if you were to visit the Department of Social Services, you would definitely see the need for this additional space. There are other county buildings here in the courthouse area, and if you were to visit those, you would see that those are fully occupied as well.
Okay. That would be good information to have. I will do that. I'm not here to debate the space you need. It's the utilization of the space we have. If that's fully utilized, that's one thing, and I don't necessarily have a problem with that. But I just know there's tons of space vacant out there, and, you know, I'll make sure that that's part of the analysis. Okay, I, so for this particular item, I would, I would make a motion on this. I don't know if any of the commission members have any thoughts or concerns or questions regarding this particular item. Hearing none, I am going to make a motion that this is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan because of some of these issues I'm raising. So if there's a second to that, second, any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
Two noes, and five Medina and Smith, thank you very much. The motion passes. Patrick, move on to the next item, please.
Yes, sir. The next item would be the first of four transportation projects. This item would be the removal of the bumpouts along Route Three, between Bragg Road and Salem Church Road. Currently, that area of roadway is a level of service E, and the proposed improvement should yield a reduction of approximately 1.8.4%. The, what it would result in effectively would be four through, through traffic lanes westbound on Route Three, again, between Salem Church Road and Bragg Road. The improvement is in accordance with the comprehensive plan's transportation elements, Policies One and Five, to maintain acceptable levels of service on public roads and to plan future transportation facilities cost-effectively and implemented in a timely fashion. That's all for that item, sir?
Yeah, no, I, what I'm gonna propose is that we can vote on those four in one package.
Yes, sir.
If you want to move on. I do have a question, though. In general, it is taking the bumpout lanes and making them through lanes.
You could still make a right turn, of course.
It's a through right.
A through right removed.
Very good, thank you.
The next item is the design right-of-way acquisition and construction of a roundabout at the current three-way stop at Old Plank and Andorra Drive. The replacement will enable a more, a continuous flow of traffic through the intersection, which currently serves approximately 19,000 vehicles per day and functioning at a level of service E. And it will also accommodate an improved connection to the county's Chancellor Community Center, which is located immediately southwest of the proposed roundabout. The improvement's in accordance with the comp plan's transportation Policies One and Five, to maintain acceptable levels of service on public roads and to plan future transportation facilities that are cost-effective and can be implemented in a timely manner, and Public Facility Goal One, to provide community facilities in an efficient and cost-effective manner.
The, if I may comment on that, do you have a level of service at that intersection? Did you mention that?
It is functioning at a level of service E.
E. And at this intersection, the roundabout is going to require a fair amount of right-of-way. Is that correct?
Well, the official design isn't done. I can't really attest to how much right-of-way we'll need presently, but we'll need some.
Yeah, and there's a potential project in that area that may impact that.
That's correct.
And my traffic guy is coming up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Doug Morgan, Transportation. You are correct. There is right-of-way there, and the developer who is proposing to assist with this is acquiring or looking to acquire. If you'll pull the floor computer, please. You'll see, looking towards the top of the screen, that's gonna, that's where, north, to the right of your screen is east, that corner there. And there have been no designs, but it has been discussed that right-of-way would be provided, so it would come to a less of a cost to the county.
Very good. Thank you, Doug.
Excuse me, if I may. That right, that right-of-way that you're talking about, that's gonna be on the property that this unnamed developer is talking about?
It'll consume a large portion of each of those properties, right there at the direct intersection, but yes, the property directly to the right of the intersection is the one I had mentioned.
Yeah, to the right when you approach the intersection, it's gonna be on my left of the screen.
Yes.
That property there, it's been in contention for a while.
Correct.
Okay? And you're talking, you're telling that the right-of-way that you've got to acquire is going to affect these other properties also? Or just this property?
Oh, no, it will. It'll affect those properties. It'll affect the entrance going into the community center. It'll affect the adjacent properties to the north, northeast, and northwest. But the design, again, has not been completely, there's been no design formalized, but the development of that property shows a roundabout that may move more into the parcel where the developer has control of that parcel, so it won't affect...
That's, that's what I'd like. Thank you.
The investment, sure.
Is that center, do we know if that's gonna stay there, or is that? I've heard many discussions if that's gonna be moved, closed, because of the poor intersection. Any, Doug, any...
It's planned to stay there for now.
It's planned to stay there.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ben.
Moving right along, the third construction project is to upgrade two existing cul-de-sacs that are located within the Bloomsbury subdivision. All of the road segments within that neighborhood have been dedicated to VDOT, except for Monument Court and Nob Hill Court, which both require some additional pavement and shoulder construction work prior to accept, prior to their acceptance into the VDOT secondary street network. The improvement is in accordance with comprehensive plan, transportation policy one, to maintain acceptable levels of service on public roads. The two intersections are depicted on this aerial map, Nob Hill Court and Monument Court.
Excuse me, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
Who would be paying for these improvements?
The county will be paying for those improvements.
And why is that?
The bond that was originally posted for this neighborhood expired. There's no way to recoup any monies from the developer, so the county has to pursue this on their own.
Oh, thank you.
Go ahead, Doug.
With your question?
No, no, go ahead. Do you have a statement?
This was a development back in the eighties. It was developed and the roads were to be turned over to Virginia Department of Transportation. A bond was held on those. Today, we currently hold evergreen bonds. They are continuing, reoccurring, they renew every year. And the eighties, I believe, we did not do that. Bonds expired. This developer kind of went under, Sagin Homes, and I managed to get several of the bonds in that area that were not evergreen bonds pulled. This two-segment roads, the two segments here, were not covered under any of the bonds. They had expired.
Is it your best guess at this point that the roads were built to VDOT standards at that time?
I've been out there numerous times with Virginia Department of Transportation and trying to mitigate the situation. The roads at that time potentially were constructed to VDOT standards. The roadway width, the design, lane width, shoulders, and drainage. So VDOT is working with us. However, Virginia Department of Transportation will not take anything other than a completely new roadway. They won't just accept a road in its current state. They will only accept a road that's in new condition, because they will continue the maintenance thereafter. And it's supposed to be a 10-year life of a road that's turned over to them. So in this instance...
When you say new condition, to the current standards.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And this, this has been there since the late eighties, and had it been turned over when it was, you know, constructed at that time, and the developer didn't just walk away, then yes, it probably would have been turned over to Virginia Department of Transportation.
Patrick, how did we end up picking these two roads that need to be brought up to state standards?
They were designed on a plat, and they were designed to be turned over to Virginia Department of Transportation. They're public roads. You can have private roads or public roads, and you can design subdivisions with public roads in the county. Very limited now. I mean, a lot of times, we do those as family divisions. These were VDOT roads. They come in and they develop the property, they had the record plat, they did their site plan, they started building homes. As they build those homes, the roads are developed and turned over, and each section gets turned over to Virginia Department of Transportation. When they start to build out, they do the last section, and you'll see, if you could pull up the aerial map, it's at the end of Monument Court. It's at the end when you drive straight into Bloomsbury. So all the front houses were done. He got all the other lots sold, didn't get the roads turned over, and left. So these two roads were not turned over to Virginia Department of Transportation. They're not private roads.
Were they not turned over to them by the county or by the developer?
The developer.
My question is, why is the county responsible?
The county signs, the right-of-way is hereby granted to Spotsylvania County. All the right-of-way in Spotsylvania County is granted to Spotsylvania County for Virginia Department of Transportation. So it's given to the county to be turned over to VDOT for maintenance. In the event that it doesn't go to VDOT for maintenance, we're responsible for that right-of-way. We sign off on that plat, saying that it's supposed to go to Virginia Department of Transportation. The developer signs that plat, we sign that plat, and we have that plat recorded. We hold their bond and make sure they do it. In the later day, earlier years, prior to my time, our time, the bonds would expire. Now the bonds don't expire. They're self-renewing. So in the event that a developer decides to walk away, we still have those funds.
Thank you.
If I may, just a curious question. What kind of money are we talking about to do, fix these two areas?
We've had preliminary cost estimates, and I don't have those directly in front of me.
Just a general idea is all I want.
Six hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One question. Are there other properties like this, or other roads that, how'd this come up? Did they...
I'm hopeful there's not. So, you know, Wanda and I have gone through, I want to say, 23 of them in the past four years, where we've pulled bonds from 1960, and they, they gave us the money. And so I think that we have found them all, but we're hopeful that this is the only one. All the other ones that have been done have come to no cost of the county, and we were able to recoup those funds and move forward with those. So don't, don't get this misconception that this is a rural addition, or these are private roads that the county is building, or, I don't want that to be, that is not the case. These are VDOT roads. They were designed and approved to be turned over to Virginia Department of Transportation. The developer just didn't do it.
I guess I'm more curious about how, how were these pieces identified? Did citizens say, hey, this is not being plowed or taken care of? How did...
That's exactly what happened. So when it doesn't get turned over, the citizens, and they start having deterioration, and VDOT goes in there and they did maintenance on the road, and they stopped VDOT and said, why aren't our roads done? And so they called the county, and I started looking into it, and I see that there's no resolution. We have no approval. I've never turned anything over. The developers never turned anything over, so we immediately tried to find the bonds, and of course, they did not exist.
Mr. Chairman, one other question.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
There's no process to go back to the developer to get the money?
No, sir. He, he no, it no longer exists.
The company no longer exists. He exists.
Yeah, he does.
Right.
But when you sign something with an LLC, that's exactly what it is. It's a limited liability corporation, and we can only go after that.
Okay, thank you.
That's why most developers have 15, 20 different LLCs.
Yep.
May I ask?
And that's why we have continuing evergreen bonds now that don't expire.
Well, how do they continue to build in there? Those million-dollar homes?
Well, in Bloomsbury?
Yes.
The, those lots are sold. They, they're owned by somebody.
Well, that somebody ought to be paying something, too.
Well, if you bought, if you bought a lot in there, let's, let's use an example. If you bought a lot in there and you haven't decided to build, and you wanted to build on your lot, why would you have to pay for somebody else's property that the developer kind of walked away from? The disservices to the citizens who are living there who don't have their roads taken care of. The disservices to the people who built their home on the Virginia Department of Transportation roadway, and now they have no maintenance on it. So the disservice is really to those citizens there, and that's my job as a, as a public servant, to make sure that we're looking out for those people. Unfortunately, it comes to the cost of the county.
Yeah, the issue here is they're within the Spotsylvania County right-of-way or the VDOT right-of-way.
Correct.
We're the owners of it, so...
We are.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Patrick, what else do you have? It's getting like...
I have one more, sir.
All right.
The last item would be the design right-of-way and construction of a limited turn lane at the intersection of Lansdowne Road and Route Two. This project would be a joint project between the city of Fredericksburg and Spotsylvania County. The intersection itself is with, within Fredericksburg. The additional right-turn lane will improve the existing intersection and traffic flows from Lansdowne Road onto Route Two, which is an intersection serving more than 32,000 vehicles per day and functioning at a level of service C. The improvement is in accordance with comp plan, transportation policy one, to maintain acceptable levels of service on public roads, that road being Lansdowne.
Wait a minute.
Yes, ma'am.
Go back to that.
Going back.
All right. This has been forever and ever and ever, and it's always been turned down to connect that Lansdowne Road and the intersection flow that goes into the city. That's what you're speaking of, isn't it?
What we're talking about with this project is a right-turn lane from Lansdowne Road onto Route Two.
Okay. Okay. So wait a minute now. So wait a minute now. Improve that intersection? Okay. All right. So that has come up that can... Because it said it was so costly that it would never be done. But it will be done.
So show us a right-turn lane right there.
It would...
No, it's not yet.
It would effectively be right through here. It would come off of Lansdowne and turn right there.
If you see the picture on the right of your screen, that's current conditions right now. That serves as a right, left, and through lane.
All the utilities have to be moved?
In order to fit the right-turn lane, the utilities, I think that we're going to be okay with the utilities and getting the right-turn lane in there. VDOT has looked at this. We have a preliminary design, and that's where we came up with the figures for this preliminary design. However, the kind of tricky thing about this, this property, how it serves Spotsylvania County and is a direct access on Lansdowne, is actually located inside the city limits.
Mm-hmm.
So I've been working with the city of Fredericksburg, Eric Nelson, the manager of the Transportation Division over there, and I hopefully have discussed with them to move forward with their application for smart scale for this. We're working on that so that we would only have to assist with the portion of the right-turn lane, and they would apply for smart-scale funding to fund full improvements as it exits the intersection and services Route Two all the way to the city of Fredericksburg.
All right. The next meeting that you have, would you please notify me?
It's tomorrow night at 6:00.
I've got another meeting. I mean...
I am correct. You did say this entire intersection is in the city, right?
It is. It is. The city of Fredericksburg, they maintain their roads within the city. So this portion actually on Route Two, when you get onto Route Two, is actually Virginia Department of Transportation. So it kind of falls outside of Spotsylvania and outside of the city limits. But if you look at the map and the jurisdiction lines, the jurisdiction lines actually come up into Lansdowne and actually are in the city of Fredericksburg. So that's when I started the talks with them to try to get them on board and, you know, assist us. Speaking with Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Skinner, and Mr. Ross, they moved forward with this. Mr. Skinner was very adamant that this intersection needed to have something done. So that's when those talks begun. And not only did they want to, you know, partner with us, we have a study that's going on the Route Two corridor right now. That Route Two corridor study is supposed to be finishing up early spring, mid-spring. And that design will show exactly what future improvements are going to be on or needed for the backflow of traffic and congestion mitigation right there in Route Two and Lansdowne. But what we have done is we were directed by the board to have this intersection corrected.
So what jurisdiction do we have?
We don't. We have a friendly gentleman's agreement that hopefully the city of Fredericksburg is going to work with us. There's nothing in writing right now, but they did agree to make application. I helped them fill out the application and showed them the process and went over the design, and that application process opens in April.
Right. So who's paying for this? I mean, you're assuming...
If it's smart-scale funding, it'll be federal funds.
It'd be federal. But if it isn't...
But if it isn't, it's going to be joint.
Joint, okay.
Because last year's revenue share projects, this was one of the items that was discussed in front of the Board of Supervisors for revenue sharing. What revenue sharing is, is a 50/50 match.
Right.
We pay 50% of it. The state pays 50%.
And the city pays?
So what we were going to do is do a revenue share project to where Spotsylvania and the city of Fredericksburg pay 50%, and then we get 50% from that.
Can I go to that meeting, too?
Yes. Come on.
Good luck with that one, Doug.
All right, yes. Oh, it's tomorrow... Where is it going to be tomorrow night?
It's at the 9119 Old Battlefield Boulevard in the Economic Development Conference Room at 6:00.
This is the Transportation Committee?
The one I can never make.
We do have Planning Commission representation, and Mary Lee, you are the alternate. So if...
That works out.
And so it's going to be out here?
Yes, ma'am.
I've got to come out here and then go to Travis at the...
I'll be more than glad to bring all the information to your house and go over it if you need me to.
Oh, great. What did you say?
I said, "I'll be more than glad to bring all the information to your house and go over it for you if you need me to."
Right. And just as a reminder, by our policy as chairman, I am on the Transportation Committee.
I'm aware.
I struggle mightily to attend, but you are the alternate.
Yeah, I know.
So...
Well, I do want to see this project.
We can change that tonight.
So this project, as a matter of fact, is not up for the discussion on the Transportation Committee agenda tomorrow night.
It's not?
Mm-mm.
Oh, well, then I won't go.
It is not on the agenda.
Okay.
The other meetings, I got to go. Okay.
Anything else, Patrick?
No, sir. Staff reviewed those five items, found all five in accordance with the comprehensive plan, recommends approval of all five, and noting that you've taken an action on the first one. We can move on and group all four of the transportation projects together if that's how you'd like to proceed.
If the fellow commission members don't mind, we can vote on all four if that's